Good evening. Today is Monday, June the 5th. This is the Cabarrus County Board of Education meeting and I'd like to call this meeting to order. Before we set the agenda, I'd like to recognize Deputy Tartt, SRO at Odell Primary. She's come out to support us tonight and thank you so much Officer Tartt for all that you do for our students over at Odell Primary, the little ones. Board members, we have an agenda. Is there a motion to adopt that agenda as written? Mr. Fur makes the motion, Mr. Harrison seconds that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Alright, the agenda is set and motion carries seven zero. Our first thing for discussion tonight was Policy seventeen forty. Specifically, we're going to discuss Section E, the process for grievance, and that was number five B, the level three appeal to the board. As you know, on that particular, we had a question about some recent denials of hearings for attendance boundaries, appeals, and the way five B reads is if the grievance has an alleged violation of a specified federal or state law, federal or state regulation, state Board of Education policy or procedure, or local board policy or procedure, the grievant will have a right to appeal the superintendent or designate's decision to the Board of Education. If a grievant has not alleged such specific violation, he or she may request a hearing before the board, which the board may grant at its discretion. The board's decision whether or not to grant a hearing for any grievance other than those with a right to appeal will be made by the board chairperson, vice chairperson, and the board attorney. If decided by the board, a hearing will be conducted pursuant to Policy twenty-five-hundred, hearings before the board. The board will provide a final written decision within twenty days of receiving the appeal unless further investigation is necessary or the hearing necessitates that more time be taken to respond. This has been the process we followed. Actually, what we do is the board attorney will make us aware after a grievance has been filed with the board. Ms. Monroe will receive the grievance. She communicates that grievance to the board attorney. The board attorney then looks it over to make sure, to see if the grievant has alleged any of these violations that I so noted earlier. And then at that point, will contact myself and at which time I will contact the vice chair, Ms. Carpenter, and we will talk about what we know about the grievance. We don't usually get a whole lot of information, but just enough to say that these particular areas may or may not have been considered in this transfer grievance. The attorney usually provides us an option or a recommendation, and between Ms. Carpenter and I, we will or may not agree with the recommendation and may continue to hear the grievance, but it does give us an opportunity not to hear all the grievances that would come forward to the board that are related to transfers. And transfers is the only area that we really don't hear much. We don't have that many appeals. So, board members, with that summary, I will open it up for discussion. Does anyone wish to offer anything up? Mr. Powell?
How many denials have you issued in your time on the board as chairman?
We have only had three, and actually, they were all this year.
If I understand correctly, you mentioned that you had just very little information, but you actually make a phone call to one of them, one of the grievance participants directly. Is that correct?
I did. To explain why we weren't going to hear their specific, because they'd asked specifically, they'd sent me a personal email asking me if I would contact them, and I felt like I was obligated to make that contact because they asked me to and I told them that I would. But I explained to them what was going on with their child, and then I said that I would do some more research, at which time I did some more research for them. Normally, I don't do that, but I did because they asked me to, and in that, I found that there was a workaround for their particular situation that would have satisfied the requirements of what they had asked for. And it was all within. Ms. Carpenter?
Now, I can tell you, normally, all the ones that I have seen, or the three that we have seen, I would say that I've been given ample amount of information on the case for me to make an informed decision. Now, if I do not think I have adequate information, I would definitely ask for additional information. Normally, the attorney gives us, or Eileen provides the attorney and us with adequate information on what the grievance is, and we make our decision based on that. Now, if I did not feel like I had adequate information on that, I would definitely ask for additional information before I base my decision. But on the cases that I have had brought to me, I feel like I had ample amount of information for me to make my decision, whether to bring it to the full board or not bring it to the full board, because what information was given to me, it was pretty much cut and dry, that no policies had been violated and that there was, it was, you know, it was pretty much cut and dry what was, that it was not something that the whole board would need to hear. And so, you know, based on that, that it did not need to be bopped before the whole board. So, I mean, the ones that we had, and like I say, there's been very, very few.
How long has this policy been in place?
Just a minute. I can tell you when the, what, two thousand and one, but last updated was twenty thirteen?
September, what, that'd be thirteen?
Yeah, but I think the change, that change was done in twenty thirteen, because I don't remember that.
That's what I was getting at, because, you know, I've been a vice chair before, and it never, nothing like that ever came to us. I think Cindy's probably been a vice chair or chair maybe, and I don't think we ever did it that way in the past. That's why I was wondering how long that's been in effect.
Yeah, so it's been since September two thousand and thirteen, so almost.
What do you mean by that? What do you mean by that? You've never done it like that before?
That the chair and vice chair never made a decision on whether something was, came before the board.
So, who made the call? It would just come to the board?
I guess, or the lawyer, someone made it next, but it never, in my time, nothing like that ever crossed.
And you've been on the board for quite some time.
And I talked to former board members that was chairs, and they don't recall any time they had to make that decision.
And I'll share, I agree with Tim. I don't recall in my years of service either, although in a way, if you will, I appreciate the intent of why that may have been put in, even though I wasn't on the board then, from the standpoint of sometimes there are hearings, non-policy related, that do have an alternate resolution that would seem to be feasible when that we really can't offer anything else, because we are not a complete district of choice. If you apply to one of the, I forget what the new term is, but magnet programs and whatnot academies, then that becomes a choice, but a regular school is not a school of choice. So, I understand why it's there. I don't have any objections to hearing all of them. It does take a tremendous amount of resources from staff to hear all of them when there's likely nothing else that the board can do, so.
Does anyone quite recall why the twenty thirteen change was made? Was it a PLS update or was it?
I don't show it being changed in two thousand and thirteen. Well, A was changed, but not that.
The last updates were twenty twelve and twenty thirteen, but does anyone know why this particular, Section E five was added?
I can't recall exactly whether it was done in twenty, most recent revision, the policy was revised every year between two thousand and nine and two thousand and thirteen. I don't recall exactly which year this revision was made, and we would have to go back and pull board minutes. It was made, my recollection is, because at the time, there were more and more grievances being filed, and it was a concern about grievances such as Ms. Furtinbaugh was describing, that don't rise to a level of requiring a mandatory hearing. This is in our current policies in accordance with state statute, which sets forth the categories for which the board must hear a grievance, and then permits the other categories to be optional for the board as to whether or not they hear it, and the board can determine how it wants to process that. The board at the time this revision was made decided to go about it this way, with it being a decision by the board chair and vice chair. I can tell you, having looked at policies other boards have adopted, there are a number of different ways this gets handled. Some boards designate two or three person appeal teams who hear all appeals of a certain type. This board has always chosen to sit en masse, to sit all seven of you, to the extent that's possible for hearings, and I think as you all get bigger and bigger, thinking about how you want to structure this, obviously, the way, the number of grievances that are being filed today, you know, directly relates to the growth you all have experienced, and so this may be a time, because of the size of the district, for you all to consider how to structure this. But my recollection is at the time this was put in, it was put in as a way to ensure that the entire board wasn't getting pulled together for hearings such as, I don't like the fact there's not more pizza in the cafeteria, just to kind of pick a, you know, a lighthearted example for something that is not a violation of a board policy, a state statute, or any underlying constitutional issues.
And has the chair and vice chair made any effort to make these determinations within three days, five days, a certain period of time after the grievance goes through the right processes? How soon since this change has the chair and vice chair at least attempted to make a determination?
Well, this year is actually the first year that we've actually had grievances come to the board for transfers. So, this is the first year that I've actually had to make this decision. I've been chair for two years, and these never came to my level, so people weren't following through with transfers or transfer issues at that point, so. And I've always made sure that the vice chair always is involved. Now, in answer to your question specifically, David, when we get from Mr. Enrique, that's probably less than a week, less than five working days that we respond, because, you know, we have to, a lot of times, we won't get these until like a Thursday or a Friday, so I'll wait till the following week and talk to Ms. Carpenter about it, and we'll confer, and then we'll tell Mark this is what we've decided. Mr. Fur?
I'm not against, you know, what you're doing, but something we need to think about with the future redistricting, we may, you may have more of this. So, we could meet five days a week, or we could let you guys do it.
What I'd like, I mean, as I read this thing, it says, "If the grievant hasn't alleged such a specific violation, he or she may request a hearing before the board, which the board may grant at its discretion." That's all of us. The board chair makes that decision, but the board chair should solicit us, get our feedback if we want to hear it or not, and then make that decision. And I didn't think we've really talked about it much, but I think it would be better if we would at least solicit the board and see if they want to hear it or not.
Well, the last sentence, Rob, says, "The board's decision of whether or not to grant the hearing for any grievance other than those listed will be made by the board chairperson, vice chairperson, and the board attorney." So, going on that last sentence is why we did it the way we did it, rather than trying to contact all the board members and try to get, because once you start going out and contacting board members about a case, then you've lost your, you've lost the ability to be objective about it, because now you've kind of pre-heard the case, and it's going to be hard to find objective folks for that particular instance.
This policy doesn't mention anything about transfer. Maybe that's how it was applied, or that's the reason it was put in there. I'm all for maybe having a student transfer panel, or having something set up on a regular basis to handle some potential load of student transfer cases. I know the other districts do that. They have many more transfer issues than Cabarrus County in just districts I've worked in, in my younger days. So, I would certainly support that, but I would like to continue looking at this. I do think that the language is contradictory, "The board may grant." I think that's a little confusing, based on, it says, "Which the board may grant at its discretion." And another thing is, from what I understand, I don't know if you guys had a chance to read through all that was sent to us, but, you know, in a lot of cases, the staff have their hands tied, and the policy on certain things is very clear, and so to go outside of the policy with, you know, either a hardship or just an abnormality that may happen in a family, or just anything that's unusual, doesn't necessarily mean they're breaking, that we are breaking policy. It means that they are holding to policy. And I think that to send that before the board makes some sense, because, you know, it gives them their chance to argue why we need to maybe look outside of the policy in specific cases. And that, quite honestly, that's what I signed up for, is to look at each individual case and make, help make a decision. But, you know, hearing, hearing all that you went through to make your decision, it makes me, you know, wonder why, you know, that, why we weren't involved or being able to participate. We've actually had conversations about ways to get more participation in the appeal process. So, that's just some of my thoughts.
I'd like to make a suggestion, Mr. Chair. Could we, who's on the policy committee now? Is that Rob and David?
Carolyn.
Okay. Oh, Carolyn, okay. So, David is great at wordsmithing. Can we make a suggestion to come up with a couple options, or maybe even just a single option, to kind of go along with Vince's idea? Because as I'm sitting here, I'm thinking, transfers normally occur this time of year, maybe early summer, so there's a couple month stretch here. What if in May and maybe June, we just have a date on the calendar that is, and they will be short hearings, you know, they won't be able to go on for an hour apiece, but everyone who's interested in just, that appeals to the level of a transfer would get thirty minutes, and we'd have whatever, eight slots on an evening, but they would have to go quickly, because most of those would not involve legal issues, attorneys, you know, what we hear, see in some of the transfers, if there are long-term suspensions and things like that. So, that could be one option. There could be other options. But I guess I would like to have, maybe have policy committee look at it, come up with a couple things that are not, I'll say, extreme burdens on staff, when we need to be clear that the board does not make an alternate school of choice situation just because you can appeal to the board. So, we're not going to start doing that, but it really has to be something extenuating.
So, a point of clarification, your proposal is specific just to student transfers?
I'm just saying that could be one solution, if we had a dedicated hearing night, but again, it needs to be clear, there has to be like a really extenuating circumstance for which there's no other solution, so.
And Ms. Stone, earlier, you were saying that different districts do grievance hearings, level threes, in different ways, but you were talking broadly as opposed to transfers per se, weren't you?
It applies in both cases. Some districts have specific transfer and transfer appeal processes, and then others have, you know, general student hearings. For example, you might have one panel who hears student discipline appeals, another who hears transfer appeals, and things such as that. So, it's, this is an area of policy where, so long as you grant the required hearing per state statute for the discretionary hearings, you all can craft the process however you see fit.
One of the, we had a weekly wrap-up report on some of the transfers, and we'd have, based on this, a number of transfers so far requested this year, a total of seventy-three this particular school year. Last year, we had four. And the number of hardship transfers that were reviewed were forty-eight this year, and then out of that forty-eight, fifteen, over almost a third of them were approved on the first review, so those hardships were genuine hardships, and staff recognized that and approved it. And so then you had thirty-three that were denied. Of that thirty-three, nine more submitted appeal to the next level committee, and of that nine, five were actually approved, and of that five, three actually solicited for a board, a board hearing. So, it seems like, you know, out of the, so that's about fifty, more than a third of the transfers or hardships are reviewed by staff and decisions made in a different way, and to help the person that's making the request. I'm concerned as we go forward, when we start really thinking about what we're going to do with all our seats and how we're going to re-apportion our students, that this could become a lot worse and real, real fast, and that we could see this seventy-seven going to a hundred and fifty or a hundred and sixty, because, and we just have to be real careful about how we do it. So, I mean, I don't have a problem. Let's send it back to the committee, but at the same point, you've got to keep in mind, we're getting ready to go through some unprecedented, where Cabarrus County hasn't been in a long time, where we're going to have to do a lot of boundary removals, much like what's happened with CMS and what they've had to go through. So, of course, ours won't be as, I think ours will be a lot more widespread than what they had to go through. Theirs was fairly confined to one area, but, alright, so.
How about this? Why don't we, perhaps even from other districts, gather some ways other districts handle it? So, for our board, a non-quorum committee would be three members, so you already have two with the chair and vice chair who are hearing it, or not really hearing it, but deciding. So, maybe we just add another board member to that as one option. I'm not saying what the option is, but to do an informal review, not an official hearing with staff and everything, but an informal review to say, is there another option that's workable? Is that the best that we can offer that family what staff has already offered them? You know, that may be one flavor. I don't know what the other ones were. Sarah, you had some ideas? So, maybe we come up with those and then discuss it at a future meeting, before we would actually commit to changing anything in a policy. Because I don't, I don't remember when this was put in, you know, that wording. I don't remember it.
I actually don't even remember approving this particular wording, so.
If I may, it was added, I believe it was added in, I found a version of it in January twenty-twelve, where the language was added in, and I believe it was approved, and it would have been at the February twenty-twelve meeting.
And that was a big redistricting year. That's, I bet that's when it was added. Yep.
I didn't remember it, but, you know, we haven't had that many transfers, because it's been kind of quiet.
I didn't remember, but that was my last year on the board before, and I wasn't chair or vice chair that year, so which is probably why it didn't really hang with me as a change.
Who was, it was, who was Holly and Wayne?
No, maybe Lynn.
Holly and Lynn?
I thought it was me.
Hey, one may.
You know, when I look at this selfishly, I want to put the burden on you guys to keep me from, you know, I mean, think about that. But I think it's going to ramp up where it's going to be too much of a burden, and all the responsibility I don't think should fall on you two guys, or that position, whomever. Yeah, because I think like, what's getting ready, like I mentioned before, it could get crazy.
I agree. Well, Ms. Furtinbaugh has offered up a possibility of getting some research. I think that's probably what we should see how some other districts are doing it, and get some recommendations back to, or at least, at least I have a report back to the board.
Yeah, a couple of high-growth districts.
I don't know if we're going to be able to do it right now.
You know, see what's in Johnson County, see what's in Union County, you know, a couple of the districts that are building a lot, that have frequent redistrictings.
The other thing that I would like to see, I would like to see what their transfer policies are. I mean, we always say hardship. What does their hardship look like? I mean, our staff may be able to say, because we say our hardship is blah, 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 blah. I mean, when I say blah, 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 I mean, we say it's this, this, this. I would really like to see what their hardship really is, because I'll hear people say, well, my hardship's this, this, that, you know. I'd like to see what theirs is. Do we need to, you know, change, you know, maybe tweak ours some, because we've heard different things. We may need to do some with that. As we say, we're going to be going through a lot of different things, and I know we have, you know, we have the financial piece, we have this. If we're going to be doing some things, let's, if we're going to do some changes, let's make sure, if we're going to go to some of these counties and ask them for different things, let's look and see what their transfers looks like if we do need to do some changes. We can do it all together.
Yeah, even though we can't, we can't talk publicly about what some of the hardships we've seen have been versus, I'll say, more non-hardships and preferences, there have been some extreme cases over the years, really, really sad situations and difficult challenges for families. That's the definition of hardship. And then we had, you know, situations where it was a preference for where they played sports, and that was pretty clear, and parents and grandparents were somewhat open about it, you know, so that's not a hardship, and so that's a preference. So, I think, you know, back in the economic sense of what's my want versus my need, you know, there's a want, a preference, versus a true need, so I think the board should really pay attention to the true needs.
Can I respectfully ask, can I respectfully ask Ms. Monroe, how many board clerks do we have? No, 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 I mean, we, Cabarrus County has one, and you're it, right? So, what we, the Pandora's box that we will find ourselves potentially opening should not disproportionately fall on certain administrative staff that have, already juggle much of, if not all, of the logistics of these things as it is. So, as we get more data, we need to get a sense of how other districts might do things, but how it's actually juggled at the administrative level, so it doesn't disproportionately or unfairly fall on one person in the staff.
Ms. Furtinbaugh, I agree with your comments about determining whether the hardship is present, that kind of thing. I certainly agree with that. I don't, I don't think that it needs to fall on one or two people to do that. I think that hearing your, the passion in your voice, it's clear that you want to be part of that process, and now you're not, and you're trying to, in full, you're trying to be a part of it, but you weren't in these three cases.
I'm trying to be pro and con, weigh the balance out loud, I guess I'll say. I haven't made a firm decision.
That's right. I understand, and those are, they're individual cases, and each case has different pieces to it that I think, you know, having, that's why we're here. That's what we all signed up for. And so, I think that we need to look at this policy. I agree with that completely, but in the meantime, we have three cases that were decided by the chair and vice chair, that a lot of those pieces, it seems like, from what I've read, are in line with what your comments were, just there. But we don't know the details, because only one person was able to talk to them directly. We, you know, the others of us abstained from communicating with them, because we knew it might be, come back as an appeal. So, I think we maybe need to make a decision about those three, give them an opportunity to possibly let us hear what it was. I mean, we haven't had a ton of appeal hearings lately. I'd like to discuss that.
We've actually had a fair number of appeal hearings. We've actually had a fair number of appeal hearings, just not for transfers. And we actually have one next week for a transfer.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, right. That's right. And that was one that was brought to Ms. Carpenter and I. And actually meant to, to me and Ms. Carpenter wasn't here and asked, because I didn't have Ms. Carpenter to bounce any ideas off of, that one is being heard. So. Mr. Powell has asked if we, you want to do the other three that were denied by Ms. Carpenter and I. Don't hear any other conversation regarding that. Okay. Alright, so we will, we will put together some, get some research performed on options of how to handle in the future. The research would go to specific county, it would go to a number of different counties that are in high-growth areas to see how they handle their policies for transfers, their hardships, their processes that they use, and try to get something back to the board. Dr. Louder or Ms. Reimer, is that something that you think we could probably get by our August work session meeting? Being that we only have one meeting in July. I don't know what's getting kind of-
We'll work with our attorneys as well as Mr. Basileso on looking at what other districts have. We should be able to do that by August.
Okay.
And we'll take it to policy, Ms. Burns, in July.
Okay.
Would it be possible to put this on the action agenda just as an agenda item? Because I don't like to, you know, I think voting at least, or at least making a motion to vote is not appropriate at work sessions, even though occasionally we do. I'd like to just add this to the agenda for next week.
Alright, so you'd like to add, is there something specific you want to add in option two point one?
Just to make a decision on the three that have appealed that you guys denied, that we have no information on or limited information on, I guess. I like to just make that decision.
I think the indication was that, if I'm wrong, rest of y'all, was that we were not going to suspend policy for this now? Because we would have to suspend policy. And then, I said, we would have to suspend policy to have that vote, to have hearings on those three.
Currently, the chair and vice-chair are following policy. So retro-
Correct, but we would have to suspend policy.
That's up to interpretation. I'm with you.
We would have to suspend policy, I believe, right, Sarah?
And I don't personally feel comfortable with that.
And then we also kind of open the floodgates to anyone else who has had a transfer request this school year. So I think the correct way is to change it going forward, not to be retroactive. Because then we, we go back retroactive for how long? You know, it's kind of the domino effect. Where do you stop it? So I don't think it's just about these three. It's about if people maybe stopped because they thought they didn't really have a true hardship and agreed with staff after that. So I'm just concerned about where it goes and is it fair to everyone.
I don't know how we can talk about the three without violating some kind of sense of privacy as well.
Alright, Mr. Powell has added, made a kind of a motion. If there's not a second, then we'll move on to-
Can we add it to a closed session?
I didn't make a motion.
Could it be a closed session discussion?
A closed session discussion about the policy?
About the three cases.
I'm sorry?
About the three cases?
About the three cases.
Sure.
We could do that, couldn't we?
Sarah, how much can we find out? That's like doing a pre-hearing. Yeah, I mean, I guess it would depend on what you all would want to talk about.
I guess more on how, how we determine if they're going to hear them or not. You know, what information that was used to determine that, to make that determination.
So I think what I'm hearing is, is a proposal for the board to consider, going back to what Ms. Furtinball said, suspending board policy to basically, or at least maybe suspending the board policy on hearing assignments. I don't have it in front of me, but under policy, twenty-four fifty. You're able to suspend board policy with a majority vote temporarily. And so that would be a question as to whether or not, I guess, there's some interest in, in retroactive, we're going back to override the, the board chair and vice-chair's determination that there were apparently three appeals recently related to school assignment that did not allege violations of board policy, state law, or federal law.
Which attorneys have already made that determination, right? That it's, they're not violating any kind of policy.
They had alleged violations of policy.
Right, the, the claimant never claimed that there was any-
Is the hardship in the policy? It's like a-
No, the claimant didn't, didn't say that the board had, or that the staff had done anything against policy or federal law or anything. They just claimed that they were in a hardship. And that was all-
Is, is the hard, is hardship part of our policy? I, I don't, I don't have it memorized.
I think we're getting close to adjudicating a case here in public, or three cases in public. I mean, we're mainly talking about the process, but seems like we're getting very close to talking about-
I think it's illegal to talk about the process out of public.
The process, sure. None of us do that.
Alright. So there's not a lot that we could talk about in closed session because the minute you start hearing the details of, of the, of the different cases, then, at which point, we, we will actually have to form an opinion. And so you couldn't hear the cases.
Yeah, I think the decision has been made. I'm more interested in, in understanding how you, how the board chair, the vice-chair, and the board attorney come to that decision. What information that they used, or you used.
Well, here's what happens, as, as I explained in an email.
Well, I understand the process. I want to hear specifically-
That's exactly, that's exactly how we come to a decision. Mark will-
What that information was.
He, he tells us what the information is and he says, what hasn't been, that the, there is nothing in the context of what they've offered that, that violates anything that we've done. And then we get a background on some of the issues associated with the hard, the transfer request. And at that point, once we have that background, then we make a decision whether it's worthy of coming to the board or not. And in each case that we looked at, Ms. Carpenter and I talked about it in great detail before we, we made our decisions, wouldn't you say, Ms. Carpenter?
Except the one, except the one that we're hearing tomorrow. You didn't talk with her about that one, correct?
Yeah, I did not because she was, she was out of country.
Okay, I just want to make sure I heard you correct.
Right. Because she wasn't here, so I, so that one has to go to the board because I did not have Ms. Carpenter here to talk to. And that would be against policy to make a decision by myself. So there seems to be a trust issue because you think that I, that Ms. Carpenter are not making very good decisions. So that's where I think the root of this problem is.
For me, it's not a trust issue. It's an understanding on how the process works. If we're giving the power to the board chair and the vice-chair to make the decisions, just want to know how that works.
Right. And-
And giving examples, specific examples to me would help, my, my understanding of it.
You can't have the specifics though because it violates confidentiality. Yeah, as long as we're, yeah, we, we just can't go any further, I think, tonight.
Yeah. I think we've outlined some of the problems with having this policy in place where the board chair and vice-chair and attorney make a decision that it seems like should be at least available to the board or a panel or some, something in place. Particularly when people that have a, have a grievance are told, you have to go to the board, your next step is going to the board, let the board decide. And then the board doesn't decide. One or two people or three people decide. And one of which is not a board member. That's problematic to me. I think we're maybe skirting some of our responsibilities. And what, it's hard work sometimes. It's scheduling difficulty sometimes. But, you know, we've worked around some of that when Ms. Furtinball wanted to participate in some of these appeal hearings. And, you know, I don't know why we can't work around it now. And, you know, do something with this policy to make it where, you know, we as a board are deciding some of these things that we as a board should decide.
Right. And we have said that we'll look at this policy for the future. Don't think that, you know, we acted within policy, we've done everything. And in fact, the attorney does not make the decision. It is not a decision for the attorney. The attorney only tells us whether or not rules or policies or laws have been claimed to be broken. Not that they've been broken, but there was a claim that they were broken and that we haven't acted within the confines of the structure that we've set up for Cabarrus County schools. And if they make that, after they judge that, then it's up to the board, board chair and the vice-chair, based on this policy, to make a decision as to whether the board should hear the case or not, whether it really has merits. We've heard a lot of cases this year. And, and the board chair and the chair haven't even had to weigh in on anything. Because, and these were the only three that we've, actually, there are four so far this year that we've had to weigh in on. The fourth one is the one tomorrow, which at the time it started, wasn't, wasn't on the, the chart.
So the reason why these other, the other three did not get a hearing and the one did get a hearing is because Ms. Carpenter wasn't, wasn't available. That is just not good enough for me. I mean, if, if somebody is available, and that's the difference between getting your case heard before the board and not getting your case heard before the board, it's just, that's just, we can do better. I think we can do better.
Well, the other reason is-
From what I understand, that's, that was the reason why one is being able to be heard by the board tomorrow and the other three did not.
Mr. Powell, the reason the one tomorrow is being heard, one was Ms. Furtinball wasn't available. The second reason was, is because, huh? Ms. Carpenter, I don't know what I, sorry. Same, but the reason is because she wasn't there to help me with a determination. We may have heard it anyway. You don't know. It's not because she wasn't so much available. It's we didn't have, we couldn't consult amongst each other to decide how we would handle it. So it has nothing, no bearing on the merits of the case as to whether, whether or not it's heard or not heard. You're making it sound as if the only reason this case is being heard is because Ms. Carpenter wasn't here. That is the main reason. Because I was, I would have not been following policy.
I, I'm not disagreeing with that logic. I, I mean, that, that makes perfect sense. I'm just, if I'm one of the three families that got denied and I'm sitting here knowing that there's another case that gets to be heard just because one person wasn't available to have a discussion about it, I'm not real happy about that. When it, you know, you read the state statute and we're supposed to be acting as an appeal body and we're not. We're deferring it to you and Ms. Carpenter. I just don't, I don't feel comfortable with that. But if everybody else does, like, like normal, then go ahead and defer the, the decision to somebody else. But I do not feel comfortable with that.
Well, it's in the board policy and we've obeyed policy.
You can hide behind policy on a lot of things and I just refuse to do it.
Thank you. Let's move on to our next discussion item. Alright, we have some items on the consent agenda. Budget amendments. Ms. Klutz is coming forward to talk to us about the superintendent recommending the approval of the budget amendments as presented.
Alright, before you, you'll have, the state budget amendments are first. If you'll just review those, you can see that, that most of those are increases into our state allotment. We've had a significant number of EC pre-K slots and were able to get some state money for that. I won't read them to you. There's another special engine contingency that we're always extremely thrilled and happy to get. There's the allotment for the early college transportation. That comes each semester if there's funding. Also, the use tax for those buses that the state provided for us as replacement buses. The, the, the decrease or the negative that you always are concerned about, and Ms. Furtinball did send an email regarding that. And so let me just explain that. So with those bonuses this year, that's something new that we've not done in, you know, probably since ABC bonuses. And they had to, the state had to project the allotment. And so that's really hard to do. Because if a teacher was in third grade and then no longer was teaching third grade, or was teaching an AP course and no longer was teaching an AP course, or if that teacher left the district, then that teacher would not qualify for the bonus. And so DPI just kind of did a rough estimate, put the allotment out there. And then at the end, after the bonuses were all allocated, they pulled that money back. Now, I mentioned third grade bonus, but they did something a little bit different with third grade. So they allocated the money, we paid the money. Any money that was remaining, the state reallocated but back to those original teachers. So those teachers got it twice. But they did not do that with the CTE and the IB dollars. And so they, those are just really kind of over projections is what that, that represents. And it goes back to the state. Okay. Any other questions on state budget amendments?
Oh, just a question on the EC. How did we, we added a bunch of slots? How does that, how does that work?
The pre-K.
We have room or, or we had room and we added slots? We added more kids and?
So at Mary Frances Wall, our students don't all come in on the first day. If you get an EC pre-K student that has certain identified needs, you have to take them. And so as we've taken those students and served them, we've also asked the state for additional money. If they have additional money, they'll try to give it to us. If they don't, we still serve them. But what-
So how many, how many students do?
How many students? We can get that number for you. I don't know how many additional students. Probably more than-
Yeah, it's just, it just seems like a pretty big, a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, you're on Fund A, so that's a-
Well, there's another, there's another item down.
There's a side to that. So the state funds a portion of them, the pre-K EC, but we also have tuition students. And so if you add the state side, the EC side, we also want to add the tuition side too. And so that's what you're looking at is-
So you're adding both type of students?
We're adding both type of students as we go. And it generates revenue on both sides. Okay. Other questions on state? Okay, then we'll go to federal. And as you can see, these are mostly reclasses for the end of the year type thing. So the one in the middle of your screen now, PRC 118, there was, there's two different type types of indirect cost rate that you can calculate. DPI calculated the higher rate, gave it to us and then said, oops, we calculated the higher rate. We should have calculated the lower rate. And so they took it back, which is no big deal. And then the others are just reclasses, sorry. And then there's a little bit of staff development there for autism. We'll go on to Capital Outland. You've seen this before. This is where we ask the county for a hundred ninety-five thousand dollars for the land for the, the new performance learning center.
And when do we pay out the one ninety-five for the land?
When will we pay out?
When will, or when have we paid out the one ninety-five for the land?
So we have not yet. And so, Mr. Louder, what, what's the progress on the, the land, the state DOT with the land for the PLC? When will we pay that out?
We'll probably pay that out until, probably August or September.
August or September?
State has to prove that, you know, state level, the state level, another community that you're following up and ask it with the governor's office or all those.
Oops.
It's just a technicality.
The short answer is August or September. Okay. Thank you. No, you're fine. And the final one is our Fund A local special revenue account. So there's a couple of grants here that you can see. And matching grants, Confucius grant. And then the last one is the one Mr. Walter mentioned. So where we add it, we're adding tuition students to Mary Frances Wall. And so we're increasing the revenue to reflect there. And I always project that revenue low until I know those students are going to show up. And so that's why it's a bigger number. Okay. Any other questions on budget amendments?
Consent?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, that's on the consent agenda. This takes us to four dot zero two, continuing budget, budget resolution. And Ms. Klutz is going to-
Thank you.
-show that to us.
So each year, if we do not have a budget as of June 30th, July 1st of each year, we need a resolution that the board passes so that we can continue to operate on July 1st. And before you is the continuing budget resolution. And it, we, from what we understand, we hope that we're going to get a budget by the end of June. So we are, we're going to cross our fingers and hope. And here's our budget resolution.
So what portions of our budget do we not have in place?
We have no portion of our budget. We have no portion of our budget in place.
Is it state, is it state funding or county funding or is it all portions?
So, so local will be adopted. I think it's the 23rd of June, if I've got my calendar, no, 19th of June, local will be adopted. State, we're hoping 23rd, 30, you know, somewhere in that last week of June, we're hoping. Federal is just not happening. It's bad, it's delayed. We can't get planning allotments, so I'm not sure when that'll be. We're just going to do our best. Yeah, I'm sorry. And so capital follows the county, so that'll be, you know, the third week in June.
All right, budget resolution, consent agenda.
Should we go ahead and approve that tonight or wait?
No.
It can wait, it's fine.
All right, that carries us to 4.03, supplements for the school team, VEX robotics coaches. And Dr. Hill is going to come forward and talk with us about the VEX robotics supplements.
Good evening. Last month, you had the opportunity to hear from Mr. Dave Parisi and the students that came along to do the demonstration for VEX robotics. So we had the opportunity to apply for a grant and to provide the opportunity for every school to have a VEX robotics team. And so at this point, we have 37 of our schools who have committed to doing VEX robotics next year, which is super exciting. And when we originally started, we thought that we would progress with a third of our schools. That's the number that we thought would be interested, a third, a third, and a third. And then interest grew and we thought maybe it would be half and half. And now I'm pleased again to say that we have 37 of our schools that are on board that have committed a coach to a team, so we're super excited about that. So tonight, we would like to bring to you the opportunity to provide a stipend for coaches for our VEX robotics teams, excuse me, supplement, for our VEX robotics teams in the amount of $500. So at this time, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Million dollar question, where does the money come from?
Ms. Furtinball, would you like to speak?
Yes. The question of where does the money come from? You used the term grant?
Oh, so-
But that's not a given, so it has to be in the budget.
Right, so let me clarify that. Great question. So the grant portion is to provide professional development for our coaches and also the supplies for, the supplies and materials that are associated with having a team. So the robots that you saw, the fields for competition, all of that is part of the grant.
Yes, but where is the grant in the process? Because that's not a given, there's a lot of competition for grants. Or do we have commitment from someone already?
We have a very strong verbal commitment that we will have the supplies and everything. It's just a technicality at this point. So there's not a lot of competition for this particular grant. It's been submitted and we feel very confident that we will have what's needed for that grant. If we don't get it, then we can't move forward with the, with the, with the VEX robotics.
So Mr. Chairman, the motion will need to be pending acquisition of grant funds or something of that nature? And then the supplements?
So as we've talked with the board about this in the last several meetings, there seemed to be ample interest from the board in supporting this. And so, you know, we, I have options, it's not, I haven't talked about the detail to Dr. Louder, so I hope he's in, in alignment with this. But there's, there's digital resources and textbook resources in the budget in both sides of the House and the Senate. This is a small number. This is 19,500 if you had 39 of them, and she mentioned that she had 37. So it's less than 20,000 and we can, and the current law allows us to move those funds around. And so that would be my, what I would propose to do to get these, these funds in the right place.
And whatever you're thinking is going to be recurring money?
Yes.
And we're not taking away from another program?
Correct. It's new money.
Okay.
Correct.
Other comments?
No, I just, sorry, me again. I just want to make sure we're very clear in the motion next week because there wasn't enough information in what was in the agenda for today. So on what it is and-
Okay, so I hear you're going to put this on action agenda for next week.
Yes, because we need to have a clear statement of what the motion is. Because I could see where there would be competition from other programs who would say, well, you know, you just took money from this account or that account. I just want to be clear where we're, what we're paying for, what was applied for the grant, and so what the motion will be, not just the generic, yeah, yeah, we all think it's a great idea, but how do we do it?
Would it be a budget amendment year over year?
So this is not, wouldn't be effective until the next school year. So as we're building the budget next year, then I would build it in, assuming the board approved it next week. And then, once it's built in, it's a continuation item, it would just reoccur until you told me you didn't want to do it anymore. Oh, yes, sure, right. Stop giving. Yeah.
What's the time commitment for a coach?
It's a great question. So the time commitment is about two to four hours per week. The season is considered year long, so competitions begin in early fall and progress all the way through the state competitions. For elementary and middle school teams, there are about six competitions that are across the state. And then the state competition, if teams qualify, then they go on to national and also worlds. For high school, there are four competitions and then the state, national and world.
So that's a significant time commitment. Is the $500 enough? Another proposal that we saw in that PowerPoint presentation was significantly more than that, it was over 1,000 per coach.
Well-
Because of the time commitment or comparison to other supplements that we offer.
Sure, so it's something new and I think we need to start small. So that's why, why the recommendation is coming forward with $500.
Yeah, and Rob, my concern was, we have other academic after-school programs and we have not jumped on supplements for them. So I think, as Dr. Hill just said, start small, see where it goes and whatnot. There is going to be, I think, significant parent responsibility and potentially expense if they start traveling around. And is there going to be anything for parents to kind of say, I understand this commitment, the school district is not paying for travel and those sorts of things?
Yes.
So.
That's correct.
Okay.
Clarification, is this $500 a salary stipend in that sense of the word? Or does it become a operating budget to, to supplement, supplement?
It's a supplement.
But is, does it become a, an amount that the teacher uses for the program?
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, within this, I mean, we've talked about the, could, within this, what's going to be submitted next week? Could you have in this how many schools we're going to be doing? How much the supplement's going to be? So we have this on our information because on the sheet we've got right now, it doesn't have that. And as Cindy said, I think it's very important that it is, that we have something on the sheet we've got, that it is saying that it is with the grant going through, that we've got that information on the sheet that we'll have next week.
I'll be happy to include that.
Okay.
Yeah, we just want to make sure that everybody understands the grant was essentially the VEX robotics person who came and spoke to the principals. I don't think he came, he wasn't with them when they came and spoke to the board. He in essence said, you guys need to apply for this because this is open, especially as we expand it. So that's for equipment and that's for how to do this, that's kind of lesson plans on how to do it and here's the robotic stuff. So the reason that Dr. Hill said that is he basically said, hey, we want to expand with you guys and if you'll apply for this, this is how this is going to work. That's why they feel like it. It has nothing to do with this supplement. So the, the equipment part of that is, here's how we're going to infuse this in 37 schools that have done it. What we're asking you guys to do is to add to the supplement schedule, so just like you would for a coaching supplement, that there's one for this because we felt like that was the way to expand it as we moved into this and kind of liked what it did K-12. So I just want to make sure there's a line there between those two because they're, they're not related.
Yeah, another thing, you know, $500 is wonderful, but you can trust me, no one coaches anything in high school for money.
No, they do it because they like it. Going forward, if you get the grant, obviously you won't get the grant every year, how will you fund replacement parts and, you know, the ongoing robotics requirements because the equipment will age out or you'll need new equipment? And if you have more students, then you'll need that. So have you looked down that particular road and to see how you're going to fund those kinds of demands?
Yes, so part of the plan is to work very closely with industry. As Mr. Parisi shared, there's lots of industry that's out there that wants to partner with us. And that's also a part of this grant. So the hope and the goal is that each of these teams will then also get a sponsor that will help provide parts, replacement parts, all those types of things that go along with the, with the, with the VEX robotics team. Yes. Do you want to talk about that?
I think Mr. Parisi mentioned this last time, but he does this amazing summer camp. And he said if we get this grant, he's ready, not this summer, but the following summer, to turn the camp over to the district. And so we will start running it as a district camp and hopefully that means we can even expand it too. And all of the funds will come back into our VEX district programming. So that could be used for replacement parts and more robots, hopefully.
Also, part of Coach Parisi's presentation was, he, he, his plan, and I think he communicated, communicated fairly clearly was to give the district a platform of which to grow on because every dis, every school in the district, I would say, puts some amount of money into robotics. I'm thinking elementary and middle primarily now. And there are all kinds of different platforms that they're spending money in, from Legos to junior VEX, whatever it was called, to the VEX robotics. And part of that was to consolidate it, so when they spend money, it's, it's money that is in this consistent platform they can use for competition. And all the schools will have, you know, similar equipment and they'll, they'll start growing their program from there. And within no time, I think, most of them will be self-sustaining very quickly through the camps, through lots of different avenues.
Yeah, and let me follow up on that because Mr. Powell's absolutely right. That's one of the things that we want to kind of solve in this issue is that you have some that are using different brands. And I think if you even look at our education foundation grants, they're giving out, a large portion of them actually go to robot equipment. And so there really is kind of a, you know, a synthesis, I think, of when they're all together, that we're all using the same equipment. If for some reason one school didn't want to do it, then you could pull another kid over. And so that's really what, for the last year or so, we've been trying to figure out, how can we do this? And when Dr. Hill came, we kind of charged him and she and Nikki have really jumped in there to make this a system situation. But everything Mr. Powell said is right, that we have these pockets of money going in different places and we really feel like there'll be a, that'll come together and it'll, you know, the camp is a perfect example of that. Something that's already successful can be much more so and then maybe even fun. But rather than schools piecemealing all this, that we kind of do it in bulk and maybe save money. So we definitely think that's part of the plan that he just articulated.
Yeah, I think that from, and Chris, you guys will know more about this than I do, but from an age-appropriate, I've read about the VEX and I think it really doesn't kick in until third or fourth grade. So I think it's important that we don't tell, say, K to two teachers or even K to three, that you can't do age-appropriate because we've bought in lock, stock and barrel into VEX. So I think, just like with any other technology, you need to keep it age-appropriate with where the learning levels are.
All right, board members, I'm going to put this on the action agenda for next week. I do have one comment, and since we are becoming a VEX robotics district house, is there anything we need to do as far as creating like a sole source or, because, you know, like with Bosch, Bosch is our approved security contractor, that, that type of equipment. And so we, we buy Bosch equipment to support ourselves on the security side, platform-wise. Do we need to do anything because now we have, we've found sole source on, on robotics?
I don't think so because, not yet. I think you need to see this grant come through, you need to get it implemented. Because if you jump on that, then all of a sudden, one company has, has all the profit on us and then you start getting into the argument of, what if we get age-appropriate for K to K2 and it's not VEX and then that's sole sourced?
Okay.
I think there's a whole lot of issues if you do that right now.
Yeah, and I have to jump into my AIG hat now because we were very invested in Lego Robotics in our AIG programming and I wouldn't want to have to sacrifice any of that that we do.
Good. You've thought it about. You've thought about it and that's a good thing. Thank you. All right. All right, so that's on the action agenda. That takes us to 4.04, policies for approval on the first reading. Ms. Reimer's coming forward. And Ms. Burns, the brains behind the whole.
I, you know-
I love you, but I know how much work she has to do.
So on that note, I am really not feeling very well tonight, so I'm going to let Ms. Burns read your first read policies for you tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. She is. Okay. So our first read policies, the first one is 2320, compliance of the open meeting law. And this was a board recommended change. The second sentence of section two, be revised to read the minute shall contain only a record of the actions taken by the board. And the policy committee recommends approval is written. 4150, school assignment. This is a PLS required change and district recommended change. The PLS required change in subsection F4 clarifies that the length of a transfer or reassignment of a student in foster care will be consistent with legal requirements and updates the state Board of Ed policy and legal references. The district recommended changes are a title change to reflect the different student assignment and enrollment options. Program choice enrollment section added as section C. Move section C to section D. Updated transfer timeline and process in section D. Reorganized sections and formatting in section G. Provided specific times for transfer being rescinded if needed. And the policy committee recommends approval is written. 4154, magnet program, school enrollment and continuation. This is also a district recommended change, which is related to the 4150. Change is entitled based on changing in the name, the program name. Moved section B procedure for admission to policy 4150. So all of 4150, that includes all student assignment. And then updates process timelines to reflect current practices and policy committee recommends approval. Policy 4400, attendance. This is a, a district recommended change. There are a few minor changes. One, and these are based on current practice, one is to allow students two school days to bring in their, their excuse from their parents, not just having to do it the day they return. Then policy 6140, student wellness. This has several changes in it. There are two sets of PLS changes in here. One is from 2014 and one is 2017. In 2014, they were waiting for, they said that boards could wait to make all the changes until whatever law that was came through, the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act and the State Board of Ed's Healthy Act of Children's Policy. So most of those are required. You want me to read all those out loud? Okay. Okay, so the 2017 updates, they've been updated to reflect the final rule implementing the wellness policy requirements of the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act and changes to the State Board of Ed's Healthy Act of Children's Policy. And those are almost all required. And that's, that's it. Any questions, comments?
Ms. Furtinball? I saw you had your finger on the button.
You just look over here right away. And- And the last one, 6140, I had a question I sent in about page four at the bottom, Section D1. The section you read, the goal for elementary schools is to provide 150 minutes weekly, which is a half-hour day of quality physical education with a certified physical education teacher. So, I don't believe we can meet that because in elementary schools, I believe that sometimes a TA may assist with a class, and I think they do PE on rotation, don't they, what they call encore? They don't have PE every day.
Right.
Okay, so we can't meet that requirement because PE teachers unfortunately, you know, are not allocated the same way as a math primary-type teacher is, so.
All right, so I looked up the footnote on that from your question.
Okay.
So, the goals are established by the State Board of Ed policy, but the board in conjunction with the School Health Advisory Council may modify those. So, that's from 2014, that addition. In the 2017 footnote, I tried to send you this on my iPhone, it was terrible. The 2017. This says, "Specific goals are not required," which only requires the wellness policy to address physical activity goals. "Any other goals may be modified to reflect local preferences, except those identified as required." So, we can, is that correct, Sarah? We can change that?
Yeah, my recollection from the policy committee discussion of this was that this is a very aspirational goal that I think everyone realizes that under current funding and structures, it cannot be met. However, I think it is the, you know, a very aspirational goal for which people would like to be able to one day meet. And so, I think it's up to you all whether you want to keep this, this is one of the recommended areas, keep this recommended language in there to be in alignment with the state policy, or whether you wish to revise it to reflect more current and actual practices.
I guess what I'm concerned about is, the word "goal" is there, but that's four letters that will be looked over for those who are anxious to have PE offered to the children every day. And so, to not even give the implication that we can fund that. So, I don't know if it, if there's just maybe a slight rephrasing that could be done. You know, one, leave out the certified physical education teacher, possibly, if the rest of the board would agree to that.
I would recommend changing the language to include something to the effect of, under the supervision of a certified physical education teacher. Because I know all of our schools have certified physical education teachers who more or less supervise teacher assistants that perform other duties like fit labs and second classrooms in gyms that are split, et cetera, maybe something of that nature.
Except that we still don't offer PE every day. They go outside and play or have other recess time, but that's not what this is talking about. This is talking about a 30-minute-a-day class.
There is some language that does give us some information about possibly being dance, recess, some other things. So, what we'll do this week is we'll work with Ms. Stone on pulling all that language together. We'll send you guys something and bring it back for action next week for you.
Can we just cite the reference, the state that we're trying to meet, the state guidelines or the state recommends, whatever that is? I mean, that's not, this isn't something we're coming up with, we're not changing what the state is saying, are we? So, let's reference, that's a state goal, or that's a state something.
Yeah, if you'd like, the actual language in the state policy is, elementary schools should consider the benefits of and move toward having 150 minutes of quality physical education per week with a certified PE teacher throughout the school year. So, I think we could easily tweak that with the policy language to align with that. That's very easy.
And this is a very honestly admirable goal. I would love to see that, but it's what we call the unfunded mandate. So, unfortunately, that would be a huge, huge budget increase would be required.
Related to that policy, we define the School Health Advisory Council, SHAC, which normally, once you define something, you should use that term throughout the document, and it does not. I'd like to see it, take out the references to council and all that stuff and put in the SHAC reference. And then I had one question related to this down on the bottom of page three. Again, we're restricting what can be sold during or after school and fundraisers and, you know, there's still a lot, several schools are selling cookies and selling donuts and all that stuff. And here, it seems very restrictive to that.
That goes back to the Healthy Hunger-Free Act, and after 30 minutes at the end of the day, then they can do that. But we have to wait till 30 minutes to the, after the last class.
Yeah, but that's not the practice at some of the schools.
Thank you for telling me that. I'll go looking for it.
Well, they got to raise money somehow, right?
Are there any other of these that you want to put on the action agenda? I see that we're going to have 6140. Any one other, any other ones?
2320, definitely. I don't see why we need to be making a change to that policy.
Okay, 4150?
I have a few comments to it, but I don't know if I need to, needs to be on action.
Are those simple comments that you could just relate to Ms. Burns? Or are they some major structural changes to 4150?
Just again, talks about what we'll be facing in the future down on F and making sure that we include, if we're going to change districts, that we define that as homeschool boundaries. And if we're going to do capping, that some of that's in there as well, and it's not currently, or at least I didn't read it as being in there.
Mr. Walters, can you please clarify that again for us?
Yeah, I'll be happy to talk to you afterwards on that.
All right, so you're going to cover that with them? Okay.
Can we just make sure we get it in a redlined version so we all see what Rob's changing? Since we read it, you know.
Let's put it on action if she decides to change anything and it comes back. You'll see that.
Okay, Magnet, anything with that one? That would be 4154. Consent?
I just had one issue with the. You got to find it now, see. It had to do with returning a form, and I just don't think it's appropriate that we would kick somebody out of a school because they didn't return a form. So, there's that issue. I don't know what page that was on, but I did have a trouble with that. That would be the Magnet policy, or it's not Magnet, it's Choice Expectation.
Program Choice.
Continuization now. Okay, it's on page three, number B4 at the bottom. Later intent forms will not be accepted and may result.
Yeah, I think there has to be some limit, some rule about that. Otherwise, the seats aren't filled, you're telling some families they can't get in because you're waiting on people who didn't return forms.
Yeah, I understand the concept of that, but I just don't like the way, don't like the way it's worded and the threat there, so.
I do, I do believe the word "may" is what they discussed about that. And the problem is that they are holding a seat, and we have a lot of people on waiting lists. So, there eventually has to come a time that the parent has to somehow communicate with us that they're going to do it. So, that was the discussion around that, but.
But if I'm a school principal, I'm going to reach out to that parent, get a yes or no.
Absolutely, and they will.
I'm not going to just go wait for, wait for a student or something.
They will, they will. All that process is usually followed.
So, is that one okay for Rob, based on the? So, 4154, is that action or is that going to be a consent?
Well, if the intent is that we're going to do everything we can to make sure that that doesn't occur, then I'm okay.
Yeah, well, what "may" seems to indicate that there's going to be some kind of conversation.
And that was a change, because it was a "shall," so we changed it to "may" for that purpose.
All right, so can I put that on a consent? All right, and 4400 Attendance? Consent? Looks like consent. All right, so that's on consent. All right, now, so we have 2320, 4150, and 6140 are the action agenda items on this first read. The other two are 4154 and 4400 near consent. All right, that takes us to 4.05 Policies for Approval on the Second Read. Any comments?
Have we gotten any feedback on any of this?
I have not seen any. All right, consent? 4.06 Renewal of the Annual Renewal of the Computer Lease, Mr. Stocks come forward. After you've destroyed our systems all day long, I mean, maybe we need a complete re-overhaul, right?
In order to get our new computers in by the start of the school year, we need our lease executed before July 1st, 2017. We will be doing two leases this year, one from Apple and one from Dell. The Apple lease is a three-year lease at $301,419, and it will provide new teacher laptops for five elementary schools, plus give us some spares for additional growth of teachers. The Dell lease is a three-year lease at $298,140, and it will be for 1,369 Chromebooks that will be going to replace the Generation 1 Chromebooks at Coltron Web, Patriots, and JM Freez, and then some additional Chromebooks for Concord Middle. And we have had these quotes looked at by the attorney and Ms. Klutz. Any questions?
Board members, are there any questions? Ms. Furtinball?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we did not have these last night. They were just uploaded today, I guess. So, I was not able to read them today.
All right, so I'll put them on action. Any other questions, though, if you have any?
Okay, so, these are replacing existing machines, is that what you're?
The Chromebooks. Oh, whoa, yeah, actually technically, they all are, yes.
These aren't new, these aren't new computers from the system, we're replacing existing computers, is that what we're doing?
Right.
So, we have, what, over 30,000 computers now? Is this just a drop in the bucket on what we actually have?
Yes, drop in the bucket.
How do we handle the other ones when they come? You would like a rec, you would like a replacement cycle how often, every three years?
We would like to be every four years.
Every four years?
Yeah.
So, this, we're replacing computers that are more than four years old, or how?
They're, they're right at four years old. They all are.
Okay.
2012, I think.
Yeah, I think the laptops are probably closer to six, the Apples go early 2012, the Chromes.
The Chromes were when Patriots opened and first became STEM.
They are, first-year Generation Chromes and the Gen 1s really are not holding up as well as what's happening in the Gen 2s. So, we're taking the opportunity to update those.
And that's just a small portion of what our need is, though, right?
We have over 37,000 devices, and it's a small portion. But I will say, I am very thankful to the commissioners who have at least given us a $2 million rolling lease. It's just, this is the odd year. Next year, we will have a far larger purchase.
Okay, thank you.
So, Kelly, can we approve this after we hear from the commissioners on their approval of the budget, since that's local money?
So, what I would, I think the motion is written for you to approve it effective July 1st or after. Certainly don't want you to approve it now, but by then, the commissioners will have approved, and we feel, we feel really good about continuing the current money that we have. It's not a new addition.
Do we need to wait and approve this at our end of June budget meeting?
It's, like I said, it's not.
We can approve it pending the commissioner's approval.
You can do that, yes.
Okay. I just know we don't have the, officially have the money yet, even though there's a.
It's not new money, it's reoccurring money. So, it's money that's already in the budget.
Yes, but it's not approved until they approve next year's budget, so, does, I just worry we can't.
Yeah, you can just approve it pending.
Pending commissioner's approval.
Totally fine.
Okay. The reason we asked for it in June is because, hit July 1, we want to press the button because we want these devices here before the opening of school. And everybody else across the country is ordering from Apple and Dell too.
Kelly, will we get that sales tax back, or would the county get the sales tax back?
So, we would get the sales tax because we make the payment on that. So, when we make the payment here, we claim and get it back. When the county makes the payment there, which sometimes is more advantageous for us, and we make, let them make it, and it benefits us more.
Okay.
Other questions on this? So, this is on the action agenda for next week. And if, Dr. Lara, if you could, or Ms. Monroe, if y'all could adjust the wording of the motion to include, approve pending the BOC budget approval, Board of Commissioners budget approval. So, that will satisfy all our needs. All right, next is the contract amendment for Wolf Meadow Cell Tower, Ms. Klutz. A revenue item.
All right, some of you folks were here back in October 2015, and we brought before you a contract to allow this SCI Towers to place a cell tower on the property of Wolf Meadow. It is a, like Mr. Shoemaker indicated, it is a revenue generator, although not as much as we need. It's $900 a month we've collected for one year, and it was the wish of the board to try to reinvest that money into Wolf Meadow. And because I've only collected $10,800 thus far, I've not reinvested yet, I'm waiting to get a little more. Because all of their items cost more than $10,800, so maybe next year we'll be able to do that. But anyway, the reason I'm here before you today is because they would like to amend the agreement. I have sent the amendment to our attorney, Sarah, and she redlined most of it. And I think we're in a comfortable place. We feel like the amendment is acceptable now.
Can we raise their rent?
Can we raise their rent?
Thus far, it's been a good relationship. I would just kind of leave it alone.
Now they've got the tower there, let's raise their rent.
Can we get a copy of the original lease? It's not on there. I didn't see the original.
Here.
No?
Hand it to him.
That's not the original.
That is, there's the original. It's in board docs.
It's all there, it's just redlined, so if you read it without subtracting anything.
Right.
Right, that's the original?
The amendment chain.
No, it's not, it's not. This is what, this is what this is.
So, it's October 2015. Mr. Walter, October 2015, if you look in that board doc, you'll find it.
Yeah, we're, what jumps out at me is you have a commencement date of May, when we actually approved this thing back in October. And if it's $900 a month, aren't we losing that $900 a month from October through this May that they're saying is the commencement date? Because it says they don't pay until the commencement date.
So, that was a number of years ago, and it wasn't ready, they weren't ready to take possession of the property until May. And we were aware of that at the time we signed the agreement.
That wasn't my understanding, but okay. And then it also says that there's an additional, every time they get another cell town, cell contract, it's another $200 a month to us. So, we do, we can get additional funds for this thing.
We can get additional funds.
So, are we checking with them, or is that on the honor system, or how's that work?
I have not. I mean, I'll just add that to my list of things to do on a monthly basis, no problem.
Go out there.
Well, again, we're trying, if we're trying to make sure that we're getting as much as we possibly can. And at least my understanding was that if we assign this thing in October, that's when the lease should have started, so.
Board members, are we okay with the consent agenda on this contract item?
Just thinking about what Rob was saying, and I don't know exactly where that was as far as them telling us, could we just ask them or write in here, Sarah, for an annual or semi-annual report on any?
for an annual or semi-annual report on any increase? And that way, it's not on Kelly's shoulders, it's on their contractual shoulders?
I like a semi-annual.
Yeah, me too.
I want to get that.
That'd be great, thank you, Cindy.
Yes, we can. I'll work with Kelly to find the right place to plug that language in.
Alright, so we want this on the action agenda then for next week?
Yeah, can we again verify the commencement date really? I don't quite understand how that-
I know that it happened May 1st, that's when I started getting the money.
Right. Okay.
Alright, so we got that one on the action agenda. That moves us to 5.02, which is the 2018 Early College Agreement.
Good evening. You got a copy, a clean version, and a review copy of that, along with a note from Dr. Spalding outlining the four major changes. You probably noticed that there were a lot of small, just, oh, is it just the one copy, is the clean version that's in there? Okay. I think I probably did not put the edited version in there, because it had the review notes by staff there. But we got a copy that you can review if you'd like to. Apologize for that. But you have a clean copy of that. The note from Dr. Spalding does outline the four major changes. A change on the first page, bringing them in compliance with their curriculum policy manual. Discipline policy changes in 2.7 and 2.8. And one thing that's really good for us, which is a waiver of fees for our students, up to nine hours, which I think was up from six in the past, which saves some money for us on that end. Any questions?
Do, do we have our own SROs at the Early College? Or do we share that sort of function or service with the college itself? Bless you.
It's not really shared with the college. I can let Lynn speak to how that's done.
So, yes, we use our own SROs possibly to share from like, for example, the one on, close to Northwest High. That SRO is called when necessary. But they also have their own security there that we also work with them on. But if we have a specific issue, then we use our SROs from another school.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a couple of questions for Ben. There's just a couple, I'm surprised David didn't catch this first. There's a couple acronym misusages and not, that need to be, I think need to be corrected, except that RCCC has already approved it.
Yeah, I noticed that they did as well. And I even, I found also just a couple of little small typos in there. And so, I definitely, if you find those, and you can just send those to me, I'll make sure that they get a copy of that.
Okay. And then I had a question in section 2.3. It refers to that Gabarus County Schools pays for the liaison or liaisons, but doesn't identify a number. It just says $50,000 per year complete. So how many do we pay? And shouldn't that be in there, since it's a financial obligation?
We pay for two. And if we need to specify the exact obligation as two, one for each of the early colleges, and the amount, I believe we can do that.
Yeah, the amount's there, it just doesn't say how many. And I didn't want it to be open-ended if they feel the middle of the year that we're adding someone, and all of a sudden, we have a $25,000 encumbrance, you know, that we won't prepare for. Just trying to look out for you. I'll send you-
Thank you.
So how many students actually take more than nine credit hours a semester?
Well, all of the students will eventually. So the difference is when they hit that nine credit hours.
Everybody will at some point have that and then be responsible for these fees?
Yeah, they're delaying when the fees begin. So if you said before is when they hit six credit hours, they started charging for that fee, they now charge it at nine hours. So essentially gives our kids about another horse under their belt before we get charged that fee.
Okay.
Any other comments? Action agenda or consent? I would think consent.
I think it can go consent, just with those two little changes.
School Nutrition Program Procurement Plan. Ms. Baker is coming to talk to us.
Good evening. Before you is the School Nutrition Procurement Plan. This plan is being updated by the state, DPI, Child Nutrition Services, and then therefore, we are updating ours as well. We are going into our state audit next year, so we're trying to get every policy that we can in compliance. The two biggest major changes to this program, to this policy, is changing the word, the title "child nutrition" to "school nutrition", because that is what we are called here locally. And on page eight, the information on emergency and/or pressing need purchases were updated to match the state's document. We had been following these correct procedures for these type of purchases all along. In fact, a prime example of the emergency in pressing need came today with our micropurchasing, to be able to go purchase water for the six schools that were out of power. And we were able to go buy $211 worth of bottled water and deliver to the schools that needed it. So, so we are, this is a prime example of a policy allowing us to do this. Our board attorney, Mr. Henrichus, and CFO Kelly Klutz has looked at this policy as well. And at this time, we're asking for your approval for the document to be on the June 12th agenda. You guys have any questions or comments?
Board members, any questions for Ms. Baker?
I'm sorry. I did my homework last night, or yesterday. Okay, there are two spots in here where there's a $90,000, over $90,000, under $90,000, there's no $90,000. And the same with $10,000. The, I learned that in math class when I was really young. You have to account for all of your numbers in the set. So we, it just needs to say whatever the statute is, whether or the policy, where the $90,000 hits and where the $10,000 hits. So whatever wording you pick is fine. My math teachers will be happy.
Other comments for Ms. Baker? Alright, consent agenda.
I had one.
Oh, sorry.
If you just, under word says, it's talking about awarding contracts. What is an RFP stipulation? Can you give me an example?
Yes, an RFP stipulation would be something that we've written in there as something that's going to meet the need to be consistent with other board policies. For example, we are looking at doing a staffing contract with Contract Services to provide additional substitutions employees next year. And one of the things we've met with Dr. Jones is we're looking at, for example, doing background checks. We want the company, whichever one it is, they're going to have to use the same company that we're currently using, we feel confident with, with background checks and, and our drug testing. That is something that's going to be a stipulation in that request for proposal. That would be a prime example.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And just changing topics, just quickly, just want to say that you are my hero. I have been fighting for, well, five years since I've been on the board related to annual increases in lunch costs for our students and our families. And for somehow, you have, I guess you can let us know that we're not increasing our lunch costs for next year. That is just amazing, and I want to thank you for that.
You're welcome.
If you can explain, I don't know if anyone wants to-
We were able to utilize a new process that was given to us from the federal government, and that was to apply for a waiver for school meal prices if we were able to have an adequate amount of savings on hand. And through some of the things that we've done this year, looking at just trying to be more efficient and to provide new menu choices for our students, and continuing to look at the quality of program we're doing. We were able to manage to do that this year, and we applied for that waiver, and we were granted that for next year. So we're very excited about that.
Outstanding, and I think our families are going to be very appreciative of that, of that work. Thank you.
Can we have chocolate milk?
Yes, and we may even get to go back to 1% chocolate milk and not fat-free. So we're excited. We do, and it can be 1% now. So, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Dawn. Alright, board members, that's going to be on the consent agenda, based on what I heard. And that carries us to 5.04, the Hartzell Williams Legal Contract. I don't know if you've taken time to look at this. We tried to get it out there as quickly as we could. Actually, we got this one out much sooner. Are there any questions? Have you taken time to read through the Hartzell Williams contract? Oh, you have not. Alright.
Is there hourly, what is their hourly rate based on? The Schwartz &amp; Shaw hourly rate is like 1.60?
No, we're at Hartzell &amp; Williams. If you'll go to that one, please.
I understand.
And confine your conversation to that one, not-
I understand, but in comparison of the hourly rates of the two, the Hartzell &amp; Williams is one, is 2.30 an hour, I believe?
250.
2.50 an hour?
Per partner.
The other one's 1.75.
Question, why are they dramatically different? Is that what you're wanting to know? If not, I would like to know why they're dramatically different.
Is there a going rate for legal services? Or is it a matter of a different block of work Hartzell &amp; Williams will take?
Hartzell &amp; Williams's work will be confined, based on what the board voted on, to construction contracts and real estate procurement. So that's what their focuses will be on. And the 250 is what they offered to us. My esteemed partner here asked me to try to negotiate below 2.55. They came in with a 2.50 and thought that the-
They were originally 3.7.
They were, yeah, the original RFP was $350 an hour. So they came in at this rate.
And I'm not implying some rate is higher or better than, I simply don't know the going rate for legal services.
And Mr. Chairman-
Whether it's construction or more generic or general.
One of the things we learned, two just subtle differences in meeting with each of the firms, because I was on that committee, is how they bill individual phone calls or emails. And so, part of the rate structure for the second firm is to bill their increments of time in 15 minutes. Hartzell &amp; Williams bills theirs in six minutes. So that's just, you know, some say take the money by the hour or get paid by the hour. Some get paid in a combination of things. So there's differences. So we'll pay travel on one firm, the other, the local firm, we won't pay any travel ever on, unless we send them to Raleigh, I guess, for something or whatever. So they basically self-admitted that that, the whole package is just not the hourly rate. It's how they bill everything or don't bill things.
They didn't define, they didn't define that six minutes in this contract, though.
That's one of the things I wanted to look for, because I didn't see it.
They didn't actually define it in the contract. That's the only thing that's probably not defined.
There's nothing about clerical costs in there either.
And cost of copies and things like that, so.
And then-
We just need to go back through, what I want to do is go through the, the RFP response and make sure the key points are in here somewhere, maybe in that appendix.
Alright.
And I had one other comment was, they have an automatic renewal. I don't think that's consistent with our policy. They have a 90-day notice, I guess. I don't think that was consistent with our policy.
Well, it's just terms and conditions. We have to get back with them, but I was hoping to get a little bit more reading done on this, but obviously y'all haven't had a chance to. So get with me this week, do some homework, and let me know what your concerns are, so we can get with, get a finalized contract that we can vote on next week.
Yeah, my apologies, but this was a heavy reading agenda tonight.
I know. Okay. Alright, so that carries us to the next one. We need to vote on this next week, if we possibly can, on both of these contracts. So I really would appreciate some, y'all spending some time looking at these. So the next one is going to be the retainer agreement for Schwartz &amp; Shaw. We had a very good meeting with, with those folks. We went through a number of the different options that they had. Obviously, when the board firstly went into this, we were not considering a retainer. But when we compared their options they had, I don't know, I don't know how to count by letters, but they had up to option H, which was eight or seven or eight options. And option H, when factored in, and I sent you an email on, on that, what it kind of worked out to on a straw model that I had, was about a 50% reduction. Basically, the contract is that we would be spending $3,000 a month for a retainer that would recover all of our Board of Education meetings, all of our policy meetings, and potential policy visits. It would also cover all of the travel for those meetings. So there would be no travel. So basically, when you start at that point, it also covered six half-day classes for us to have each year. And those were all-inclusive, so there was no traveling included with that. As you can see, as you go through this, I don't know if anyone's had a chance to go through this particular proposal, but it is, the only difference is, we did try to get them to agree to a tenth of an hour rather than a quarter of an hour. And they said with this rate of $165 an hour, that it was just, it was going to be difficult for them to give in on that one. So that was one item. And then the copies were at 20 cents a copy, and that was the only item that they had a problem with, and so.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, in number three, that's what I wanted to address, the, our discussion about the copies and the fact that we would make any volume copies here.
Yes.
I think we need to somehow address that, because the wording in here says that we'll bill at, in the third row of number three, will be itemized and billed at cost or at the applicable rate charged by the firm to all clients. So their standard rate was 20 cents a copy, even for their in-house copy usage. And they were supposed to get back with you, I believe, regarding what their actual cost was. So that statement needs to be amended with whatever that feedback is.
They never, they came back to me and said, it's 20 cents, based on this really low rate, because they had assumed, and in our conversation, they had assumed that they would get possibly a commercial. So that's-
That's really high.
I know.
Yeah.
That's, that's where they are, and in-
Then we need to put in something about the clarification that any volume, I don't remember what number we were talking about, would be copied by the district.
Yeah, I think we had stated, we had a rough draft of what I had put together with something around 1,000 copies or something. But I have to look and see.
Is it possible to stipulate the use of-
Bulk copy over 1,000 should be sent to an outside copying service.
Is it possible to stipulate the use of online material?
They're not prepared to do it.
No, that's not, this is something that I had kind of written up.
They're not digitized. We asked that.
What's that?
I said they are not digitized for their documents. They were, they were showing us folders that day and saying, this is how we keep our records. We open a case number, whatever they called it, and put it in manila folders. And I said, we're, we're pretty much digital here. And they, they said they were not like that far, whatever their phrasing was.
Yeah, but we asked them about presenting us a bill. They're going to present us a detailed bill every quarter on the retainer. So quarterly details on the retainer, and then, of course, you'll get the normal details on all the non-retainer items every, every month. And it will be presented in a couple of different ways, summary level.
That's a page?
20 cents a page for copying.
Including their in-house copies?
But when I went and costed out, it was a 50% reduction over the standard off, over the base RFP. So it was a, it was a pretty big reduction in, in the rate when you look at the travel and the things that they offered up in option H. And they also could do television, you know, video, and so we could save our travel in that way as well. I believe we got a fairly decent rate out of them, and I think that they, and I think we picked the right option. So if you can, present me any other questions that you may have. But, and we can probably put that, we can ask them to add that piece about maybe a bulk of 1,000 or something like that, that's what I had- of a thousand or something like that, is what I had talked to them about, where they, if they had over a thousand copies, a thousand pages, then that we would send to an outside service.
Yeah, we can even stipulate copies for certain events like training. Huh?
We do those in-house.
I know, but it needs to be in here. Otherwise, they will, could contend that we, they will send them to an outside source at twenty cents a page. So I just think we need to be clear because some of these things did appear to be in their rate structure as we were asking questions, so.
If you could get with me no later than Thursday morning of this week with your comments so that I have a chance to get with Mr. Shaw and, or his.
Can we get these, on board docs, they're in PDFs, but the other, the email one may be in Word.
Email, I thought I sent the email with.
Is it in Word?
I thought I sent it to you in a Word doc.
It just needs to be in Words, so.
Yeah, I believe the email I sent you, y'all.
It may be.
Yes, it is. It's in Word.
Okay, I'll use that copy.
Yep, it's in a Word document.
Okay.
And then I sent you the RFP as well. So you would have option, the RFP through option H, all right? All right, so this will be, both of these will be on the action agenda. I need responses on both of them from you, anybody who has concerns, so I can get those to Mr. White and to Mr. Shaw by next Thursday. All right, so five zero four and five zero five are on the action agenda. That carries us to five dot zero six, which is the CDI lease of Long Preschool. Ms. Klutz.
No, you don't. Let me, let me explain just a little bit. So over spring break, we were notified that we would not have the Head Start grant. And so that's been about six weeks of response time. So we've been, Dr. Hill has been working very hard and trying to make sure that we've got everything managed and where it needs to be. One of the things that we've been dealing with is that CDI, which will be the management group as of July the first, needs access to that property. We own long school property. We own the building, the old building. We do not own the modular. And that has federal interest. That was transferred to the partnership. But for them to have access to their modular and not force them to move it immediately, they need a, some type of lease agreement to get on to the property. So been working with Sarah and the CDI folks and put it on the agenda as a holding place, but then realized that we have a board policy called the community use of facilities that would do, I think, just fine. This would be a very short-term lease agreement, a facility use agreement. Since it's, our board policy says less than a year, we can use it. It also gives the superintendent the authority to do things in extenuating circumstances. Talked with Sarah. We feel like it's going to fit the need for the short-term gap, be less than six months. We transfer all liability. They provide certificate of insurance, all of those things. We're not on the property. Sarah looks like she needs to say something. So part of the reason that I feel strongly about doing this is they want to be on the property on June fourteenth to be able to start serving and getting ready for the students for next year. And we are going to talk with CDI and Head Start about them purchasing this property in the next board meeting here with you and then the commissioners meeting. We want to sell that property. We think in a matter of ninety days, the transaction will be complete and it will no longer be our property. We will not need a lease agreement. It'll probably take me sixty to ninety days to get a lease agreement in place if I were doing a real lease agreement, right? And that's why I prefer to use the facility use agreement. So that's where we are right now.
Don't we have to get that property, oh, excuse me. Don't we have to get that building back from the partnership? Or are they going to have to get the property back from the partnership?
So that's the modular you're referring to? The modular was transferred when we were no longer the grantee. It was transferred to the partnership. Sarah helped with that. The partnership will now be responsible for transferring it to CDI. So that, we're out of that loop.
So the only exposure we have is actually the Long Preschool proper. And that is using the facilities lease agreement allows them to use the kitchen facilities, which is basically all that they're really using in that. And then, once we consummate the sale, which is a whole, it's got its own life to it because the commissioners have to get involved as well. But once we consummate the sale, then they would own the property outright. We would no longer have any dealings with the Long Preschool building or any of the equipment inside the building.
Correct, that's the plan.
Well, basically, what we're saying then at this point, then, if we do that, we're basically saying, then this board is making a decision then to basically get out forever, never of being Head Start ever, never then. I mean, if we make this decision, we're saying we're never going to have Head Start again. But if we're saying that, what's happening to the, what we're doing over at, well, are we doing any Head Start at Mary Frances well? And are we doing any Head Start at the other loc, the church at Lockhart? And if we are, how are those funds being handled?
So I'm going to start, and Dr. Hill can get in here when she needs to. So I would never, ever say never, ever, right? I just wouldn't. So yes, it appears that this Board of Education is getting out of the business of Head Start, but we were awkwardly placed anyway. It's odd for a school system to be in the business of Head Start. There are folks that, it's their business and that's what they do. So we feel comfortable that our children, the children in Cabarrus County are going to be served. We are not getting out of the pre-K business. We are not. We still have more for pre-K, Head Start, whatever you want to call it, whichever term, from whichever funding source. That, those dollars are still there. We have four different schools that have one classroom in each. Lockhart is one of those things that we are struggling with right now. There will be two classes of pre-K and there are two classes of Head Start. If we can get more Head Start slot, pre-K slots, we, and we hope that we can, we can keep Lockhart going and funded and out of the, out of the red and in the black. And we'd be able to serve more students. The House and the Senate both have more pre-K slots in their budget. So we feel like it's a, there's a good indication that we'll be able to keep that partnership with Lockhart and serve more pre-K students.
But not Head Start students.
We would not be serving Head Start students there. Head Start, CDI will be serving Head Start for a year, and then that grant will go up for, for folks to try to get it. And whoever gets that grant then will be serving Head Start students. But the glory, what we like about selling the land to CDI and Head Start is that the location for these children will not change. And we will be serving Cabarrus, or they will be serving Cabarrus County students. Whereas if another grantee came in, if we didn't sell them the land, the likelihood that they would change location is pretty high because they have to move that modular. But by selling them the land, it's a win-win for both organizations, or we feel like it is anyway.
Do we know anything about this CDI? I, I, I know that's a loaded question, but you're talking about our children. And, and I know that is loaded and, you know, but it's our children they're educating. And when I say our children, it's, it's, it's the children from our neighborhood. I mean, from our, our county. And I, I take it personally. And it's our children. And do we know anything about them?
I'm going to let Dr. Hill answer that question.
CDI is an interim grantee, so they're in the business of doing this work. So they travel all over the country and have groups all over the country that serve in situations that are similar to this. So when any Head Start grantee, for whatever reason, is no longer the grantee, this group comes in and runs the interim transition until another grantee is named.
We don't know them. I mean, I mean, I hate to be negative, but we don't know them. They, I mean, they could be from Florida. They could be from anywhere, though.
They are.
They're not local people.
No, they're not, but they are, they're sent, neither is Head Start. They're the federal, Head Start is the federal government. And so this is essentially the group that works with the federal government for transition. So Head Start is very familiar with them. They use them all the time. So we don't necessarily know them, but we don't, we don't have a choice. They are the group that, so even if we wanted to get back in the Head Start business a year from now, CDI would still be taking it over because that's their job. So we don't know them, but the federal government knows them intimately and pretty much, this is the only group that can take it over, if that makes sense. So they're as close to being the federal government as you can be. They're actually going to purchase this property. When we talked to people, we were on phone calls and Kelly and Dr. Hill know, you know, have had a lot more with that. But when we've, when we've been on the phone calls, we're talking to Washington DC, we're talking to the regional office in Atlanta. So we're in essence talking to Head Start. That's what this is really a subsidiary. I mean, I guess technically it's not, but in essence it is. There is no other group that can do it, they do it.
Other questions for Ms. Klutz, Mr. Walter?
Just what we were saying earlier about the federal budget. Are these people relying on the federal budget to be passed before them to have funding to do any of this stuff? Or are they?
They're in the same position we are. We have Title I and EC funds that are millions of dollars that we're waiting here. They are too. Yeah.
So they may not be able to act as we're open to connect.
They're going to do the same thing we're going to do. We're going to do a continuing budget resolution and we're going to continue to operate within the confines of the law and hope for the best.
All right. Any more questions? All right, so this, will we be getting an instrument?
Not to you, not for you.
I have one question for you. Will we be getting an instrument to look at for this, this lease or this facilities agreement? Do you think the facilities agreement requires us not to do anything except them fill out a, the form and that's the base?
So the facilities use agreements do not come to the board. They are executed by staff and Dr. Louder. Although Sarah has brought up a good point, I think it's a great point. We'll attach an MOU of understanding to the facility use just to kind of, you know, put some things more in concrete than we, because it's a little bit different than what we normally do, and I think that's a great idea. We can certainly copy you guys on it once it's completed.
So as far as the board is concerned, this is not an action agenda.
It's not an action item.
Okay, I just want to make sure. And it's not a consent item.
So it doesn't even need to be on the agenda.
It doesn't.
Right.
No, I was just, I was here, I was holding a flag.
All right.
And I had explained.
So that one's not on next week's agenda. All right, board members, is there a motion to adjourn?
No, Mr. Fur's got something.
Oh, Mr. Fur.
Which is, which is, as you all guys know, is highly unusual for me to hold up a time to adjourn a board meeting. But going back to, and I hate to do this because I've never done it, but going back to the first item, the policy seventeen, was it seventeen forty? You know, as I've been sitting here during the meeting and, and no, I've got complete confidence in you, Ms. Carpenter, in making the decision you've made. That's not, that's not the issue whatsoever. But the only thing, as I sit here and think about those people that didn't get to hear the hearing based on the timing of when they submitted it and when the one that we're going to hear tomorrow, based on timing, gets theirs heard. I just think sometimes, you followed board policy to the T, and like I said, I got confidence in you guys. But then again, sometimes I think we've got to do what's right. And to me, what's right is to listen to those other three. And that's where I'm going to leave that at. I mean, we can do whatever we want to do, but, you know, it's not their fault that, it's just a timing issue. Ms. Carpenter happened to be out of the country or wherever she was at when they wanted theirs and. Let that, let that be known and whatever we do is what we do. But I don't know what action or, you know, it pains me to agree with Mr. Powell sometimes, but not. But I, I mean, I really do think, you know, and Rob as well, I think they, sometimes you've just got to do what's right. In my opinion, this is the right thing to do.
Mr. Fur, without, I guess, saying anything that might be confidential for these families, having read the materials for tomorrow, I think had Ms. Carpenter been available, I think she probably would have agreed that it needed to accelerate to the board. I don't know about the other ones, but I'm just wondering if that was part of Chairman Sheumaker's decision is knowing a little bit about the context of that particular case.
No, and what I, like I said, I have no, it's nothing to do with their decision. It's, to me, it's based on you penalizing someone just for the timing. And that's it. We can just go on, but that's just my opinion.
Well, when I saw this, the one that is coming, I agree that that one needed. It was extraordinary, so never mind.
Mr. Chairman, did you add that to the agenda for next week, the action agenda? I think at one point you documented that.
Actually, we didn't put it on the action agenda because the outcome of our discussion was that we needed to get some research. And when I talked to Ms. Reimer, she said that she could have us something for the August meeting regarding the policy itself. And that was what that was about. Because we were talking about the actual policy. So there was nothing on the action agenda for next week.
Can we put that on the action agenda or can we just vote to hear those three appeals tonight?
If there's a motion, then we can do something. If there's not, then we can't do anything.
I'll move we hear the three appeals that were denied at whenever Ms. Monroe can get those scheduled. My second.
Okay. So there is a motion to hear the three appeals that were denied?
I believe we would have to suspend the policy first.
Yeah, we've got to get into discussion, so I just want to get this down. All right, so now we're into discussion, Ms. Horton-Ball?
I just, as a matter of order, I think we need to suspend the policy first and probably be specific as to why we're suspending it for three and not for others. I think, as I said before, I'm worried that we're opening a Pandora's box and that we, we could potentially have legal action against us because we're suspending it for selective grievance hearings and not following the policy as it sits today.
So what are we suspending or what are you, what are you saying needs to be?
We would have to suspend the policy that a decision by the chair and vice chair in conjunction with information from the board attorney was not required, that all requests for grievance would come to the board. And so then I think you get into stating.
The court of policy doesn't exist. There's not, that says all anything. It says which the board may grant at its discretion. We're following that piece of the policy. It's a contradictory sentence. We don't have to suspend anything. We just vote to hear the appeal.
But you have to read the whole thing in context and the next sentence, too, that says the decision to hear will be, you can't pick that one sentence out, I don't think, anyways.
And previous board made, made the decision back in 2012 that the decision whether or not to grant a hearing for a grievance that does not allege a violation of law or policy will be made by the chair and the vice chair. And so there are before you all right now, apparently, three such grievances that did not allege a violation of a law or a policy. And that was evident on their face. And in order to, I believe Ms. Horton-Ball is correct, that in order for you all to deviate from the decision that was made by your board chair and your vice chair would require a suspension of board policies such that basically you'd be saying, okay, for the purpose of these three appeals, we are going to ignore temporarily, suspend the procedure set forth in policy. And instead, those three will come before the board. And I understand the concern Ms. Horton-Ball is raising is whether or not that will open the door to other people who may recognize that they may not have alleged a specific violation. And that's something I guess we could, we probably should discuss in the next session. And that's something I guess we could, we probably should discuss in closed session.
Alright. So based on what you said, are we able to vote on this, or do we have to?
I believe it could be done all in one motion, it would be, it would be a motion to
I'm in the motion to add suspend.
Suspend the board policy and.
The specific portion of 1740, section 5B, last sentence. And here are the final, the three appeals.
But if we do that, I think we should go in closed session before we do the other.
I don't think we can vote tonight, as we don't have a closed session scheduled, and council's not prepared to give us the pros and cons of doing that. So I would make a motion that, if, Sarah, can I make the motion to table? Following closed session next week? I'd like to make a motion to table, the motion regarding suspension of policy, until we have council next week.
Alright, is there a second to Ms. Furtinball's mobile? Mr. Harrison seconds that.
Are we moving a policy discussion in closed session? That's what, that's what it seems like to me.
My understanding of Ms. Furtinball's request is to have before you all decide to suspend policy, to have a conversation with council regarding the potential legal implications of suspending that policy.
Correct.
Alright, board members, is there any more discussion on Ms. Furtinball's motion? Okay. Let's vote, all in favor of, of amending the closed session next week to hear this issue on the.
I'm actually, my motion is to table this until next week.
To table this, to, table the motion till next week after closed session.
After we, yeah, we can consult with council.
So it will be on the agenda for, it will be on our regular agenda after closed session?
After closed session, yes, sir. I would think so.
Okay.
Okay, so this motion to hear the three appeals will be voted on after the closed session, after we've heard the attorney's opinion about what's going on, okay? Alright. All in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Alright, that motion carries 7-0. Now, is there a motion to do what I'd asked before?
That's troublemaker.
And Rob Walter did the second on that? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. Okay.